Entertainer motion.
Motion to open the zoning board of appeals meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll take up the first case. First case is 37 Tamarack Drive. You want to open the case?
Motion to open case number 4309.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll explain what you did here.
Yes, good evening, everybody. When we last got together, we were having a discussion regarding the frontage need that we have for the variance. Originally, we were seeking something on the lines of six feet, and now we've done a lot of redesign for the property, and we are looking for basically two inches of variance to allow us to have the frontage we need to construct the addition that we're doing on the left-hand side of the property.
Questions? Amel? Marguerite?
Sorry, you said two inches or two feet?
I'm sorry, two feet. Two feet. Forgive me.
I was trying to look back at the plan, and I remember being a little -- it was hard to confirm your dimensions. So is the addition that you're putting on, the one-story addition, is that going to be smaller now, or is it just moved back?
It's smaller.
And smaller? Okay. And you moved it back, too, right? And then this site plan, I appreciate you providing us with one that shows some of the features in the rear yard.
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit more? So the culvert and the drainage easement appears to be on your neighbor's property. Is that right?
Yes.
But then I see this 100-foot distance, and I'm not sure what that's intended -- what the impact of that is. Could you talk about that a little more?
So the impact's not going to cause any issue with the development that we're doing for the property. It's still far enough from us that it's not going to be long-term or an issue that anyone's going to deal with. And back there is just the culvert that they built into there long ago, and it's basically dry.
So again, I mean, I think this is what we were talking about the last time, that we need to have certain reasons to grant a variance even though it's less of a variance, which I appreciate. And some of that could have to do with the soil conditions or the topography of the land. So I'm assuming there's some reason that the addition can't be pushed back even more than it is, and it needs to be where it is. So I'm just asking you to share that with me.
It's really a topography issue. If you know the area of Tamarack and Bramble Bush, our property is basically sitting in a way that is positioned not in the proper way for either Bramble Bush or Tamarack. We're just in an awkward spot on that corner, and because of it, it causes us to have this issue with topography. And what we discovered when we went through all of this is that really, if you're looking at the dimensions, and I brought Jack out to actually show it, if you measure from the street where our line is down to our house, it's 52 inches. But we discovered in this process that the town has an easement right or a right to create a sidewalk that maybe was going to be put in but did not get in. And so because of that, it really makes it look differently than what it is. In fact, if you go all the way down the street for everybody there, there are fences, sprinkler systems, everything's along that way with walkways. No one has a sidewalk there, but it's just in case they ever decided to do so, that would be there. But as far as the actual dimensions for the property, it's just because of the topography of way it was positioned. If this property was actually positioned the way it should have been, we wouldn't even be here for a variance. We would have just had this permit done a long time ago. So it's not -- it's just a topography issue.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Jack if you can share as well what you found when you went to the property.
Basically, we walked out to the back where that culvert was. We walked out to the back where that culvert was, and it drops down -- we don't have a topographic map here that's showing it, but from where, basically where it says 100 feet, from the inch mark, it drops down significantly into where the culvert is. That's what I found, and that's pretty much it. I mean, it's just the fact that it looks like over time, it's just moved down and settled in where that culvert is. And that could be because -- that could be because the culvert maybe gets -- doesn't get cleaned out properly or whatever, and the water builds up there and it pulls it down.
And so the drop is what's impacting where that addition is going?
I think, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Jeff?
No, no further questions for me.
Anybody? Oh. You got a question?
No.
Oh. Anybody in the audience have any questions? What's wish to the board?
I guess I'll make a motion that we make a finding that the topography of the property is such that it causes a significant change in elevation that requires the addition to be placed where it is on the property, and that the homeowner has done all that he can possibly do to minimize the impact of the variance. And additionally, that the layout of the road is what's actually driving the need for the variance, but that visually, it is actually more than 40 feet from the road So I'll make that finding first, and then...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to grant the variance of two feet from the front setback of Tamarack Drive as requested in the revised plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your work on this.
Entertainer motion for case number 4307.
Motion to open case number 4307. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess maybe I should read this planning board thing in, even though it's -- I don't know. But I have one piece of correspondence from the -- I think it's from the planning board. Dear Mr. Eppro, I see on your agenda that you'll be having a hearing on the project Thursday, August 29, 2024. From a planning perspective, there are many items that we would like to be a part of the review together with you. To do that, I am reaching out to see if there is a possibility to hold a joint meeting with both boards to review the project as it moves forward. Due to it being a 40B project that you have declared a safe haven for the town, we would like some input. I know it's too late for this to happen this week, but maybe on your next hearing on this case. One item I would like you to work with them on is creating a sidewalk up from Canton Street to Cushing Street along Simpson Street. This area is heavily used by school buses and children walking. There are no sidewalks or car parks on both sides of the street. It is very dangerous for pedestrians. Whereas I understand the applicant is proposing to crosswalk across Canton Street to Simpson Street, it would only make sense to continue with a sidewalk. This will be a route for the residents to access the recreation areas around the schools and connect to sidewalks on Cushing Street. A traffic light at this intersection would also something that should be explored. Thank you for your time, Dan Kelly. Okay, Mr. Crimmens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Barry O'Krimmons here on behalf of Hebrew Senior Life, here along with Mrs. Deb Morse from Hebrew Senior Life, and I'm sorry, Deb.
Jessica Welch.
I'm sorry, Jessica Welch is with our architectural firm. We have other members of the team, including our project engineer and our traffic advisors that are on the call as well remotely to answer any questions that may come up. If I could just sort of briefly walk back a little bit and fill folks in on what has happened since we were last before you, which was some number of weeks ago. We were last here on June 27, at which time the hearing got continued to tonight's meeting. In the meantime, there's been several reviews that have taken place. If you recall, we commissioned a traffic study by our traffic engineers that was submitted to the town. The board voted to send that out for an independent peer review by GPI. GPI did their original review letter dated July 10. We then submitted responses to their comments that were contained in that letter, and then GPI issued a follow-up response to our responses, if you will, dated July 30. And I think we're probably down to -- I think there were three final comments in the GPI letter that I believe have been addressed. Will be up to this board to the side. Also, since that last meeting, as he always does, the assistant town engineer, Mr. Horstfall, conducted his technical review, which produced a technical review memo. We submitted our initial responses to that technical review memo. Craig then responded to our comments with a follow-up, and I don't want to speak for Craig. He can certainly indicate. I think, to the best of my knowledge, his -- all of his original comments have been addressed, many of which he's recommending be conditions of approval in the decision. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't think we had any issues with any of those proposed conditions of approval. Finally, the other thing that had happened or has happened, Mr. Roth, I believe, prepared a draft decision, which he sent to town council. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your point of view, Brian Winter was on vacation for a couple of weeks, and I think he only got back at the beginning of this week. So I'm not sure how much he was able to review the draft decision that Bill had prepared. And again, obviously, Bill can speak to that issue. My understanding, Bill met with Attorney Winter this morning to discuss that draft decision. And to sort of jump ahead, it's our hope that the board will have a decision shortly with the hope and expectation that you'll be in a position to vote on that decision at your meeting next week, September 5. We recognize it's a short week. Don't shake your head, Gary. Anything's possible. But in any event, we'd like, ultimately, at the end of this hearing tonight, I think we're going to be requesting the hearing be continued to that meeting, recognizing that your next meeting after then would not be until September 19. And it just puts us at a disadvantage regarding -- and Deb could speak more to this if you want her to, but regarding the overall funding for this project. We recognize that these projects take time, but at the same token, client is under a lot of pressure in terms of meeting its deadlines, both for financing and otherwise. It's important for us to try to move this process along and not to take any shortcuts on any part of the review. And that's why I mentioned the reviews at the beginning of my comments. The reviews have been extensive and thorough, and we think it's going to result in a decision that the board can hopefully approve as expeditiously as possible. So I think, Mr. Chairman, I think probably for procedural purposes, I'm sure you're going to want to hear from both Craig and Bill, and then would be happy to respond to any questions or comments that may come up.
Is there anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Roth, town planner. Barry pretty much summarized the documents that you received in chronological order. I wanted to make sure that the board had everything from the last hearing, which, you know, is Mr. Gito's letter. Then there's the GPI July 10. Then there's the Hebrew Senior Life July 12 reply to our things. The July 22 is a -- and I don't think I gave -- I don't know if I gave you the entire copy of the transportation report. I might have just done the front page and said this is a 200-page document. Then GPI, our consultant, re-looked at it on the 30th. Then Craig and myself on August 1 sent them a technical review memo. Then they have on August 1, August 9 replied. And then you have the August 28 letter from the chairman of the planning board. We've been working diligently with the engineer and the traffic on the site and addressing the issues. Craig can kind of talk about them a little bit greater. I will go in and kind of show you the revised site. One of the big issues that we discussed with the applicant, that they finally agreed, discussed and agreed to, is we felt that the parking spaces would be way too less. And so if you see this, and mind you, this is -- I'm pulling this color drawing up because it's easier to look at than an engineered -- than just the engineering plan. And they are proposing a 50 space parking lot. So they're providing a little over one space per unit. And in discussions with the board and in discussions with the applicant, I told them that I felt that that was a minimum. You know, I thought that that was reasonable due to the nature of the business -- nature of the project and the number of cars. So they have looked at doing that. We have gone through several reiterations of the site plan and the engineering and the landscaping and the various elements, and I think we've kind of come to an agreement on what has, you know, what they've provided is feasible and that -- and so I'll let Craig kind of talk about the overall drainage and the transportation improvements that our traffic consultants and that we're recommending. Oh, and then, yes, I did -- Brian Winter, before he went on vacation, sent me two examples of 40B decisions. I then took that, crafted it with all of the pertinent information for Hebrew Senior Life, and then went through and looked at the standard conditions that were in both of the decisions. As you know, I'm pretty much not about reinventing the wheel, and so we looked at those, put them together, went through what was applicable, wasn't. We had a lot of questions, so we used a text edit, and there's a lot of -- there were a lot of bubble questions. Brian, what about this? What about that? He then got that, replied to me yesterday. I've met with him today. We went through all of the questions, things that we needed to add. I spent until about 6 o'clock this afternoon revising that to get it to a more draft form that he can then work with. There's certain things within a decision that a lot of the technical legal things he will do. But Craig and I today went back and forth and added, after I met with Brian, the conditions that we feel comfortable with. And then hopefully, you know, Brian will look at that in the next couple of days. So that's kind of where we are. You know, I know that you haven't voted to approve it, but I wanted to get a start on, from a technical review standpoint, you know, the site plan and those sorts of things. I feel that they -- we feel they've met a lot of those things. So Brian, Craig, if you want to talk about engineering and the transportation.
Sure. Thanks, Bill. Craig Horstfall, Assistant Town Engineer. As Bill had mentioned, we've, you know, been working with the applicant continuously since the previous meeting. A lot of the issues that have been addressed in that period of time have been the addition of the 50 parking space parking lot across from Simpson Street. And there have been test pits done in that area to ensure that the soils are conducive to stormwater mitigation for that new impervious area. That will be a result from the new pavement over there. So we have a layout that shows the 50 spaces, and there's another plan that was submitted to us that shows a stormwater management area that we've received some calculations for that show that it's adequately sized and can accept the runoff, so we're comfortable with that. As far as the traffic items that have been addressed in the last month, we were looking to get 24 feet of width on Simpson Street. Right now, the pave width narrows down to about 18 feet in some areas, and with this added traffic up Simpson Street, we felt it was imperative to maintain 24 feet of width, which we believe can be done on the applicant's side of the street so we can maintain the east edge of pavement and do all the work on the west side of Simpson Street and provide the 24 feet of width. That comes at a little bit of cost to the applicant, where there might be some low retaining walls to make up some grades since the face of curb is a little closer to the proposed parking area, but it still looks like it's achievable. The other items that come at sacrifice to that are the location of a few street trees that they had planned to plant along Simpson Street, which hopefully we can find a different spot on the site to locate those trees. And certainly, they could go over to somewhere on the west side of Simpson Street adjacent to their proposed parking area. So that covers Simpson Street. However, up at the intersection of Simpson Street, we were looking for several improvements to that intersection. There are a lot of safety concerns at that intersection. The radii are very tight. Site distance is difficult. So we're looking to -- there's another plan that shows a little bit more information here of what's happening at the intersection. Maybe Bill can find that. We're looking to loosen up those radii, so provide wider radii, crosswalks across Simpson Street and also across Canton Street to a new handicap ramp and short portion of sidewalk along that new rounded area. Require a little bit of grading. Right now, it comes pretty much to almost a pointed angle. There's a small, like, two-foot-high coping that's in place. It'll have to be pulled out and regraded. And then installation of RRFBs, which are rectangular, rapid rectangular flashing beacons, similar to what we have here in the square. So you push the button, the yellow lights flash, and at Sonic. Right. So then it allows the pedestrians across the street. And I believe that the applicant has agreed to installing those improvements.
Did you want to talk about the direct nexus for the sidewalk?
Yeah, so the, you know, obviously, the engineering department is not opposed to adding sidewalks anywhere in the town. We think they're a great safety benefit, and certainly Simpson Street could use some. However, the question is whether or not this -- it's a direct nexus to this project. Obviously, the intersection improvements, the project's right there. We recognize that, and I think the applicant recognizes that, this is their intersection and has a big impact on that intersection. We'd love to see the sidewalks, but I know that it is a financial cost to the applicant and something for the board to consider.
Did you say that we're going to put the flashing yellow lights on? The other thing with that corner, and I know coming from Cushing Street to go to Simp -- come down Simpson Street, where there's an electric company that has pretty good health, and it's tough to see over. And I think on Simpson Street coming the other way, if we make that a parking lot, they're going to have to drop that stone wall, too, so that you can -- because the cars are smaller and you can't really see, you know, over the walls. I'm not trying to spend your money.
Yeah. Site distance is absolutely something that we've looked at. There's some vegetation on, as you're coming up Simpson Street towards Canton. Yeah, in that area that Bill's pointing to. There's some vegetation that would be cleared as you look to the east. I think that we can hopefully tweak the design looking west so that the walls aren't within that site distance there. The parking lot that they're proposing is far away from the intersection, so what they're doing down there is not going to impact visibility up at the intersection.
Questions? Amel?
No questions.
Marguerite?
I'm -- I thought that I was reading through all of the various papers that we received, which was pretty extensive, by the way, and I appreciate it, but I also think you have to understand that that's a lot for us to digest. And so now you're asking us to vote in a week, and that's pretty intense. Just going to throw that out there from the outset. But I thought I was reading that you were contributing funding for these types of improvements but weren't actually doing the work, and so I'm a little confused because you've said some things even...
Yeah, I can talk about that. So we have two intersection signalization projects. One is actually under construction right now up at Tosca Drive, and the other is over at Canton and School, which is in design now and on the MassDOT tip program. So it's under design and is programmed to be constructed in the next few years. The applicant was proposing to put temporary improvements there if these intersections are not signalized by the time they get to their certificate of occupancy. We felt that that would, particularly with Tosca Drive, it's under construction, it will be completed before they have their certificate of occupancy. And then the temporary signage and striping and so forth over at Canton and School just didn't seem to be money well spent. And I think that's sort of how we bartered and ended up getting the flashing beacons here at this intersection as an alternative.
So there isn't any funding now that's being proposed?
Yeah, that's off the table. So those temporary -- it was just going to temporary... So those, those temporary, it was just going to temporary fixes.
And Ms. Mitchell, one of the things that they put in one of their letters is that they would contribute the money and have the town do the improvements. And I've, we've spoken with them and like, we do not wish to do those improvements. You, you, as part of your project, can do them. You can do work within the right-of-way. You can do it much cheaper than we can with public bidding, and we don't know what it's going to cost and the time. And that's so, we said, you know, we don't want the $22,000. We want the improved crosswalks and the flashing beacon and the Simpson Street. So that's, so that's where we are. And then one of the things that then they did ask is from us, which we've given them, it's, and it's actually just in an email form, based on the transportation report, was just a bulleted item of what those improvements are. And this bulleted item, I can actually, you know, give, I can save this a PDF and have Kristen email it, that these bulleted items actually are what we then turned into, Craig and I then turned into the off-site mitigation improvements, conditions that are in the draft that we've been working on. So, and we mailed, you know, the bulleted, so we turn these bulleted items into conditions, and it's, and it states all of the different items.
Okay. I don't, I didn't see that, so I don't think it's part of our record.
We just, we just sent it back and forth.
Okay. So it probably would help to have it be.
I, it's dated Tuesday, the 27th.
Yeah. I, I get it. Like, I see that there's been a lot of work on this in the last few months.
And I did not give you all of our correspondence back and forth as just, it just makes the project file big. I gave you the main correspondence. A lot of the email back and forth, you know, is how we get to the second review or the third review.
Sure.
And I figured, you know, I assume you do not want that.
No, I'm perfectly fine with what you were giving us. I'm just saying that I think there's, might have been some more done after what we have that.
Yeah. The one thing is, one of their letters says they'll contribute money, and we, then we've had a conversation and said, no, it needs to be installed.
Okay. And then my next question on that was going to be whether or not the, what's been agreed to and what was being offered from a financial perspective was equivalent or, and/or if there was any room to address the sidewalk request of the planning board that was raised today.
The improvements are probably more than the $22,000.
I think I saw $30,000 at one point in time.
Thirty, or whatever it is. Once, the, adding the roadway, they can talk more to that, but I'm, in conversations with them, I'm, I gather between the engineer and the project person, manager, they would much rather give us the 30 versus, because it's probably cheaper for them. So, but those improvements would cost us, whatever it costs them, add another 40, 50%.
Right.
And that's not in the public's interest?
Okay. I mean, I, I don't want to ignore what the planning board sent to us, but I realize that this is a 40B and we're at this point in the process, and so, you know, it makes it a little tricky for us. I do think that there's, there's some merit to the conversation around that. If I understand it, they're looking for a sidewalk up Simpson, Simpson Street, which would be over the railroad tracks because people may be accessing the amenities at, you know, the school complex, which someday may even be nicer if we're lucky. So, I think that there is a tie-in to this particular development from that perspective. You know, I could easily see people in this development being a primary source of accessing some of those amenities within that school complex. So I'm just saying that right now. Again, I'm taking the information that I was given, and I know you've been having a lot of other conversations. I feel like there was some other open things that I saw throughout these back and forth letters, not many, but there were still a few remaining open items. Maybe they've all been resolved since then, but I just didn't get the sense that everything was completely resolved. So, I'm hearing from our people that things might have now been resolved even beyond what we were given, so I just wanted to lay that out there.
Do you want to highlight what you think is not resolved?
It will take me a minute to go through everything and do that, but I did make notes of things that I thought were still open, and I can.
There was a couple of waivers that they're looking for that you left.
Yeah.
And, and one of them was the, the, the foundation or something that was a waiver in there, and that's not us.
Oh, the Board of Health waiver? I question, is that something that can be waived by this board? And I've, I've been told, yes, it is.
This board does have the authority as part of the 40B process.
And, and in conversations, a lot of that Board of Health waiver, from my understanding, is it's more geared towards the single-family residential and not, you know, multifamily and commercial.
And I wasn't quite clear on which, what the waiver was. Was it a local? It was very confusing the way it was written up and presented to us in these documents. Was it a local bylaw or was it a state?
I think I can summarize it pretty well. There's a provision in the Board of Health regs that says the height of the, the foundation height is supposed to be two feet above the center grade of the street. And as Bill and Craig both mentioned, it's more of a, of a residential. In fact, I think it's worded in such a way that it applies to a residential. Obviously, the nature of the site is we slope down from Canton Street, so that, you know, from a practical standpoint, we cannot meet that even if we were subject to it. But at the end of the day, this board, through the comprehensive permit process, does have the ability to waive that if it, if the board felt it were necessary.
Yeah. I agree. I think it's completely reasonable to grant that waiver for a building of this shape and size with a roadway that slopes down away from the main road. It just would be impossible to have the whole thing up above the center line of Canton Street.
And if I could just follow up on Marguerite's comment, it's, both Bill and Craig have alluded to, this has been a very fluid process, so it's understandable that many of these documents have gone back and forth. Some reflect, again, responses to responses, and then there have been further offline discussions with staff on some of these items that Bill alluded to. And so, I think, at the end of the day, when the decision is drafted, I think I'm confident in that, you know, all of those issues are going to be addressed in the proposed decision that the board will be asked to approve.
And I, that's why I've been taking notes in the documents that I've been reviewing, but I'm going to need time with that decision to, to look at that. And there's this whole piece around the master plan that I did see, that there was a meeting about this, but I think that we were talking a little bit about some type of language in there that would require ongoing meetings of some sort. So, I don't know if that's part of the conditions that are being proposed or not, but those are all the different things that I'd be thinking about when I'm reviewing a proposed decision.
So, if I may, and I appreciate the comments and recognize, again, there's a lot to this project. Hopefully, if we do get a draft decision next week, I'm not suggesting, although I'd love for it to be, that the board would be in the position to approve it at your meeting next week, but I think the benefit of having us on the agenda next week would be sort of one final pass at that draft decision to see if there are any remaining outstanding issues that need to be discussed, approved, modified, or whatever the case may be.
I appreciate that, Barry, but we already got our packet for next week's. I don't even know what's on the agenda, to be honest, and I'd still need to see it. I mean, I, I need time to read it and to cross-reference with, we've got a large file.
I understand.
And so I'm just, I agree with you that I think we're close, and we're, and this is a pretty quick process for a 40B, to be honest. In my experience, we're close with that, but, and I think we do need probably another meeting with the decision to talk about it and make sure we don't have any other changes that the board feels needs to be made, not just their consultants. But I also think that we, and we may then need a follow-up meeting to vote, and perhaps we might be willing to talk about doing that in a quicker way of some sort, but I need to, I know I need time. I've got a lot here, and I know we'll have a draft decision that won't be small or short either.
My own, not to, not to get into a back and forth, obviously, on it, but if we could put it on the agenda, certainly if, if, you know, we don't, you know, obviously, we never know if a hearing might get continued and maybe your agenda lightens up. If not, and, you know, if there's not time that evening, or if we, we know ahead of time there's not going to be time, we could continue it at that time to the next meeting. But I would really like to see if we could at least put it on the agenda in case circumstances may change and there is an opportunity to discuss. There very well may not be, and I appreciate that. But if we could put it on with the hope and expectation that we might be able to recognize and we realize that it may have to get bumped over again, do you want to?
I think this is a big problem.
Okay. Do you want to address that?
When we were here last in June, we understood and agreed that this project would not be in front of the July agenda for the ZBA, with the understanding that we would be here tonight and that we would be here on September 5th where we thought the vote would be taken. And the reason that matters to us versus going to September 19th and then even after that, the only way this project will work is if we apply for and receive funding from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which is a state agency. That process unfolds as follows. In order to submit what's called a pre-application, you first need to have a meeting with staff at that executive office. They will only grant a meeting, a conversation, if you have three things in place. You have site control, which we have. You have a commitment of funding from the local community, which we have, and you have zoning approval. If we do not have zoning approval, we cannot get in front of this executive office. Applications are going to be due most likely in October, which means we have to ask for a meeting with the state in September. They won't even consider giving us a meeting without having the comp permit. So when we spoke last in June and we expressed our concern about running up against this deadline, I thought we had received assurances that we would be all set at the beginning of September. So, if we're not even going to be on the agenda for September 5th, or it's unclear, and we have to go to September 19th, and we don't actually know what will happen on September 19th, and then potentially have to get into a meeting in October, I, I don't know where this project will go. So, you know, I'm just requesting that we kind of remember what we talked about at the June 27th meeting with respect to the scheduling prior, the concerns that we voiced then.
I'll speak for myself and tell you that I heard you ask for that in, in June, and we talked about that. And I, my understanding was that the response was that, look, spend these next two months doing everything that you did. Go back and forth, it's going to take some time. We don't know where this is going to go. I didn't know how receptive you'd be to some of the suggestions, et cetera. I don't ever feel that I, I was committing to you that we would get this done in September. I didn't know about your deadlines with these applications until tonight. I understand what you're up against, but I also have a duty to this town, and I need to be able to have some time to review a decision. And I'm not going to be able to have time to review a decision for next Thursday. It's Labor Day weekend. I don't even know that we're going to get that decision until Tuesday or Wednesday, and I can't, sorry, with all due respect, I, I can't turn that around with a file this big. It's up to the board whether they want to put this on for the agenda, but I'm, I'm suggesting to you that I need time with this decision, and.
What is the meeting after September 19th? What's the date of, or is there a possibility of having like a special meeting before September 19th? Is there, like, is there anything that we can do here to accommodate the state? It's not, it's not us, it's the state's process. And we, quite frankly, you know, some of the conditions and some of the back and forth we agreed to in order to meet this schedule that we, we talked about in June, they're not advantageous to us as a nonprofit trying to do affordable housing. They're not economic, but it's, in order to expedite and agree to the, your timeline that was imposed on us, we've agreed to certain things. And so, it's, it's hard to now hear that the timeline that was agreed to in June is no longer in play. And so what I'm asking is, is it, is there any precedent for you scheduling special meetings in order for us to meet this schedule and for us to reach out to the state?
We've scheduled, we've scheduled special meetings before, but we don't even have the draft decision, right?
No, neither do we.
Right.
I, I totally get that.
And I had indicated that. I might be more open to it when I'm at a point where I've had a chance to review this, but, and I'm sorry that you left here with that impression. I thought I had given you the impression that I was not committed to saying we would get this decision done. I didn't know what tonight's meeting would look like. This is a very fast process, and I do hear what you're up against, and I'm not trying to be difficult here, but I do know that for me, zoning approval, this is it. And when something isn't proper down the road, they're going to look back on the zoning board and say, why didn't you do that? Why didn't you check this? What, how did you miss this in your zoning appeal? I'm not comfortable enough being pushed to write a decision of this magnitude, along with, I, I haven't looked at next week's agenda, but we probably have three cases on for that. We have three on tonight, so there's two, two other decisions that we have to write. And I, I don't even know what we have on for September 19th. So I'm not trying to be difficult here, I'm just trying to have you understand that this is, we're a pretty full board right now. We have, we are having meetings twice a month that are having very full agendas, and that's been the case all through the summer. We've had full meetings all summer long. So I think the reason we put this where we did in, in August was because we didn't have room on an agenda for you the last time.
What is the process to get on an agenda with certainty? Like, how, how does that happen?
We'd vote on it tonight.
Can we vote on?
That's what we'll, we'll talk about, yeah.
And what is the process if we wanted to request a special, because if we, if this gets continued to September 19th, assuming you vote to put it on the September 19th, is it possible to get another meeting like immediately after September 19th?
We'd talk about that, yeah. We'd talk about that during the meetings.
Now, like tonight?
Potentially. It's hard to tell you yes because I don't know when we're getting that decision. That's my problem. If we had all the decisions, if we had all the paperwork, it'd be one thing.
Bill, when are we getting the decision? When do we get, when is the draft decision going to be circulated?
I have no idea. I emailed what I've done to Brian, and I do not know what his turnaround time is. I did tell him that I'd like to, if possible. I told him that I'd like to be able to have it, because he's already looked at it, and I wrote, he, he's very appreciative. He said, you know, I did about 75, 85% of the thing, you know, the, the heavy lifting for him. And I said that, that the goal is to have it in front of the board so they could at least start discussing and looking at it for the September 5th meeting. But I don't know what his schedule is. But I do wish to let you know that the 180 days is September 24th.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. I don't have any other questions right now.
I mean, it's, it's going to be tough to, even if Brian got it to us on Tuesday, because tomorrow's a half a day, Saturday we wouldn't get it, Sunday we wouldn't get it, Monday we wouldn't get it, it's a holiday. Tuesday, if we got it, I mean, to digest all of that, it's going to be pretty tough, so.
I'd like at least a week with it.
I would, I would say the earliest we could, we could work with that would be the 19th. And then, I mean.
Is it possible to have a meeting sometime?
If, if there's things that have to be changed, I mean, we can try to.
Is it possible to have a meeting sometime between the 5th and the 9th?
And then, I mean-
Is it possible to have a meeting sometime-
If, if there's things that have to be changed, I mean, we can try to-
Is it possible to have a meeting sometime between the 5th and the 19th, and then be on the agenda for the 19th? Like, let's say he gets you the, the draft decision on Tuesday, the 3rd, and you want a week, so that's September 7th, I'm, sorry, it's September 10th. Can we, can we try, is it, I mean, I'm just imploring here, like, I'm begging. Is there any way to get a meeting after the 5th and before the 19th, and then be on the agenda on the 19th and have a vote on the 19th?
We can always, on the 19, I mean, on the 5th, we could always try to see what we've got, and, I mean, I'm not opposed to an extra meeting, but it's just a matter of if we get the stuff in time.
Right.
May I suggest that you can continue it to the-
And then it's a matter-
I don't even know if I'm available. I'm trying to see what we have on our agenda, I'm trying to-
Yeah. May I suggest you, you might want to, if you, after you take testimony, I think, at least continue it to the 5th. Hopefully, even if we got it to you on the 5th or the 4th, at least you would have it. You could then make an informed decision on looking at it if you wish to have a special meeting. There's more involved. The, the meeting is pretty easy, you, we can, you know, we just have to do the agenda and, but between, by the 5th, the evening of the 5th, I would know, I could tell you what is available that next week as far as conference rooms, meeting rooms, and, and those sorts of things, because there's also that involved, too.
And Bill, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, your, your board's not meeting on the 12th, correct?
Correct. Our, the planning board is not meeting on the 12th.
Right. So that is a possibility.
Yeah. Because the planning board can't, doesn't have a quorum until the 26th.
Yeah.
I mean, I have no problem putting it on for the 5th with the understanding that we were not planning, we're, we're doing it strictly for scheduling purposes.
Potentially.
But not for testimony.
And I might hand you the decision.
And receipt of the decision, but that's it. I'm not-
It's, it's not for making a decision, it's-
No. We need time to review it and talk about it, and if you want to give us documents to go along with it, we can look at them all, but I, I just, I'm just trying to be fair to, I, I hear your struggle. I'm not trying to be difficult here, but I'm thinking that perhaps what might, it's fine to put it on for the 5th, but I'm thinking what may be more realistic is using the 19th for that more substantive meeting, and the 26th would be where I'd be more inclined to say we do a, a quick meeting around just the vote. That is where, what I'm looking at, just from a reality perspective of what we have.
So you're saying you close the, potentially if you had enough to close the hearing and then, and then finalize the draft? Okay.
Can we just, because obviously I left last time without the clarity I would, I needed. Will we be, are we, is this project on the agenda for September 5th?
Not yet.
No.
But we can put it on.
You're going to decide that?
Yep.
But if, even if it is, there's no conversation about it, it's just-
Well, we have two other matters on, so I, that's what I'm suggesting.
And then you're going to take, decide whether it's on the agenda for September 19th?
Well, we can do both tonight.
And then, if it's going to be on the agenda for September 26th? Is that what you're saying?
No, then we would, on the 19th, we'd decide if we needed to have another vote, another meeting or not.
Potentially you would vote on the 19th? Who knows?
Yeah. It's a possibility, but the likelihood is that we may have a couple of minor changes that need to be made and-
Is, is there a meeting already scheduled for the 26th?
No.
That's, that's a planning board meeting, actually.
Okay. So the 180 days, so it's, actually, has it not been that fast of a 40B? Because 180 days is September 24th? That, so that's kind of when it does need to be decided?
Well, I mean, I can tell you my experiences with 40Bs is that no, it's never done within that timeframe. It's always extended. But I also look at it from the perspective of, this is our third substantive meeting.
I think, if, if I heard Bill correctly, and I think what I was suggesting as well, is if, if it were put on for next week, the 5th, as you said, Marguerite, more or less for status, and hopefully by that time you will in fact have the decision, not to vote on it, right, but have the decision, and at the meeting of the 5th, you could decide whether it would be appropriate to put it on for the 12th or the 19th or some other date. So I think that would be my request to the board, is when we get done tonight, we, we continue to the 5th next week, and then at that meeting, decide what date is, is appropriate.
Yeah, it's hard to give you a commitment, because we don't know what we're getting.
I, I would think you would know more on the 5th.
Right.
So.
I don't have, I don't have a problem putting the, putting the meeting on.
Yeah.
What we have, the information that we get in the meantime, that's the problem.
I, I think-
And my next question, if we put it on the 5th, can we do the agenda? Can we redo the agenda?
Well, the agenda hasn't been posted.
No.
So the meeting is scheduled, so there's been enough time, the meeting's already scheduled, so the agenda just needs 24 hours. You won't be there on the 5th?
No, 40, I-
I mean, but I'll call in if, if it's first on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I talked to Kristen, I said, do not post the agenda because they may decide to put it on the 5th. So she already knows, so she, so I'll, we'll have to write her a note tonight, or Craig, well, yeah, Chris Craig. We would then let Kristen know to put it on the agenda, and then she'll stamp, have a post agenda. She has to post the agenda tomorrow because of the Monday holiday.
No, she still has till Tuesday, Bill.
Can we, um, can we continue the hearing, and then when we're all done with everybody's questions and stuff? If we're not, then we'll make those motions of what we're going to do?
Yeah. Well, don't, there's public, do you want any public testimony? I think there's public here also.
Well, we, we, I mean, I don't have, I don't have any more questions, but the rest of the board has, hasn't had the opportunity to ask questions. And then, I mean, it's up to Shurm, but if somebody from the office is going to, audience is going to bring up something new, then that's, but that's up to Shurm.
You have any questions, Jeff?
No, I don't necessarily have any questions per se, but I mean, there's definitely a lot of data here, as, as everyone's kind of been saying, and, you know, I think before I'm in a position to make a decision, I really do need a, a number of days to read any kind of draft decision and kind of, you know, get like a completeness check between all the materials that I had in front of me and what, you know, we're ultimately being asked to vote on. So, I mean, the, the discussions around the dates of the next meeting, I'm, I'm open to, you know, several different alternatives, but I mean, I definitely need to have at least a week with the, the draft decision that I would understand would be acceptable in principle to the, to the petitioner.
Yeah. I think putting it on the 5th, and if you literally get it on the 5th, at least you know you have it, then you, then you can make an informed decision on when you want to do it. That's, I think, what they're trying to do.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm agreeable to that. Just hope we have something before the 5th.
Do you have any questions, Jeff?
Um, no questions really, and as someone who can't vote on the decision for, you know, ethical reasons, just a suggestion for you guys, maybe to attack this for, from a two-way front. Have you ever thought about making a request to waive the, the zoning requirement for that meeting? And if the, if the state, if the state blows you off, you know, but you just-
Waive, waive which requirement?
For the, for the meeting with the state or you have, you want to have, you can't, you can't just simply make a request to waive that while explaining the, the situation. If they blow you off, we're obviously trying to work with you to find a meeting time, but I mean-
It's a good question, and the issue that the state has had repeatedly, and the reason why this is so important to them as a gating item, particularly in suburban communities, is sponsors apply for scarce public resources to build affordable housing. Makes perfect sense, the project makes perfect sense. Without zoning approval, as, as was just said, the project can't get built. And so the state is tying up scarce resources for a project that has no future. And so they made a decision several years ago, basically, that said, if you don't have zoning approval, whether you're in the city of Boston or in the town of Stoughton, we don't care where you are. If you don't have, if the local community has not given you permission to build this project, we don't want to hear about it. And so, as you know, like, the current Haley Driscoll administration, the previous administration has been trying to put in place zoning reform. But there's 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, every one of them has local control, and the state cannot accommodate either hearing about a project or, or actually allocating scarce public resources for a project where there is not permission in the town to build the project. So they just, yeah, but it's a great question.
No more questions.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything new to bring up? Seeing none. Well, what's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion, we continue case number 4307 to September 5th at 7:30.
You can't make it 7:30.
What's that?
You already got two cases on it.
No, we don't, that's not written, that's not a, an agenda written and stolen.
Oh, okay.
Before I vote on that, I'd like to also ask that there be some type of response and address, address the planning board letter that we received, because that's still an open item that just came in today. There needs to be, that needs to be resolved somehow.
I'm, I'm happy to address that now, if, if you'd like.
Well, I know what your response might be, but I, I feel like that's still an, an item that we need to resolve.
Right. I guess it's more, as you, as you said, Marguerite, more for the board to, to, I, I would only comment twofold. One is, I think, again, I go back to the idea that, you know, we hired a traffic consultant, the town had our traffic consultants' report reviewed by GPI. GPI did not identify that as, as a need. As Craig said, you know, everyone wants sidewalks, and, and, you know, as you said, Marguerite, particularly with the schools there, it would, it would be great to have sidewalks. I think the question is, you know, are we, you know, are we causing an issue that needs to be addressed or would even be resolved by means of putting a sidewalk on that portion of Simpson Street in addition to the other traffic improvements that we're doing at the intersection? You know, again, as you say, that's up for the board to decide. My only other comment is more procedural. Again, the nature of a comprehensive permit vests authority in this board to take up those issues. And so, again, to the extent that the board would want that as a condition, it's obviously within the board's prerogative to do so. You know, we, we obviously don't think it's necessary, we don't think we're contributing to it.
It's not economic.
And, and I certainly don't think, you know, in terms, and I don't think the board's going in this direction, you know, with all due respect to Chairman of the Planning Board, the request for, for a joint meeting, I just don't think is appropriate.
Again, I, because we're being asked to do this on a short, shortened timeframe, I think we do need to hear from our consultants about that request. I mean, that's, to me, the most efficient way to get this done. We have a request before us, you know, the board has, I've heard a few of us say that we're not, we don't want to dismiss it, we don't want to ignore it, and we'd be interested in hearing what our consultants have to say. So if, if they want to talk to you, your people in the background and come up with something, I, I'm not, there needs to be some closure to this request, at least the part around the sidewalks. The planning board meet, the joint planning board meeting, I think we can handle tonight.
Well, the thing is, the planning board's not available till the 26th.
Well, not only that, this is a 40B, so I'm not sure if there's really any legal authority for us.
Well, I, I do wish to point out that that letter was written by the chairman. That content of that letter was not discussed at any planning board meeting. It was written by the chairman, solely by the chairman. It was not discussed at last night's meeting or any of the meetings. I do wish to point that out.
Okay. Oh, I appreciate that. Then we'll treat it more like a member of the public's comment, but, I mean, I think we've been trying to address all of the members of the public's comments that have come in, and that isn't, that is a new comment that we've received tonight, that if we're trying to bring closure to this in a very short, short manner, then we need to bring closure to that piece of it. But I don't think we have any legal ability to do a joint meeting with the planning board.
I think they asked at the wrong time anyway, but-
Yes, they definitely-
I mean, it's, it's not like it hasn't been publicized.
Right.
Okay, so it was a motion-
I made a motion, it hasn't been a second.
I'll second it now. I just wanted that discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it, continue to the 5th, anyway.
Thank, thank you very much. We appreciate your cooperation and, and we also appreciate the situation that you brought to the board. I don't want to come across-
That we're trying to minimize that in, in any way.
Okay. Do you have one more case?
Motion, open case number 4315.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Patel?
Push the green button, please. I mean, push the button, make the green light glow. There you go.
So, good evening all. So we're here to refile for a variance that was previously issued to expand the Hampton Inn Hotel. Just a history there is that the, the ZBA first issued a special permit modification on June 16th, 2022. Thereafter, also issued a variance for a height variance to 54.6 feet and five stories. Since that time, we also received a full site plan approval. That was given on, I believe in April 2023, and time passed. We went to go file for a building permit, and turns out that the original variance for the height had expired. So we're simply here to refile that same application, requesting a variance for the height. Nothing has changed in the project, and the original conditions remain with the, you know, with the topography of the land, the new building will line up with the existing building, et cetera. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is for the same variance that you had before, right?
Yes. It's exactly the same variance.
Questions? No? Marguerite?
No. No. I don't have any.
Why wasn't the project started?
Um, from, from the history, the procedural history, it took about a year from the first time that, so the first step in the process was to get the height variance. That would give us the number of rooms to make the project work. Since that time, it took about a year to get the site plan approval, and then we received the site plan approval. We then began our design documents, architecturals, mechanicals, electrical, plumbing documents. So that took another six months, and we came back in April- So that took another six months, and we came back in April of this year to file for the building permit. And it's just that the time had lapsed at that time, we found out. So we were diligently working on the project, there was no reason, no other reason, it's just time to develop it.
The next question, is it still considered a hotel?
I believe so.
People are staying, they're not one-night stands, three- and four-night stays in there.
If you're referring to the state leasing the hotel
Yes.
for their, for their
Program.
Program. It is correct that that is a unique circumstance, that the state has employed this program, has sought hotels to put into the program. The state does refer to them as hotels. We still pay franchise fees, we still maintain a staff, we do service the guests in the hotel, and our intention is to build another 95 rooms, approximately, at the rear of the site, and that will be operating as a hotel.
How long do you think this project's going to last, take?
The construction?
Yeah.
So we were prepared to start, our financing and everything's in place. We were prepared to start, that's why we came for the building permit. As soon as we clear this, you know, we're ready to go, essentially. So we would probably, hopefully, get started in the fall, late fall.
And how long do you think it's going to take?
I'm sorry, yes. Typically, it takes about 12 to 14 months for us to construct a building like this.
I don't have any more questions.
Jeff?
I have no questions, thank you.
Jake?
No questions.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Just identify yourself.
Yeah, you gotta come near one of the microphones.
The microphone?
Yeah.
My name is Joseph Sadi, I own the five houses across the street from the hotel. And the last year, I find like too many people, they live there like families. It's not like one-night-stand. And I don't know if it's going to be too crowded for me. Like, I own the houses, it's going to lower the value of the houses. Plus, the last time you did the project, some of the contractor...
You're talking to what, you're not talking to them?
Okay. They dumped two trucks in my property.
So they put an equipment on your property?
No, no, they, they put the truck, and they dumped like bricks and leftover construction. And it's still there.
Still there?
Last year, I tried to clean, I found that like it's hard to remove. I don't want it if you're going to approve it, it's going to be the same thing.
What are you saying, they dropped construction stuff?
About two dump trucks. They opened, there's a little wall, I think the excavator moved the wall, and they dumped it because it was a lot of bushes. I didn't see it at that time, but somebody told me from the hotel, they put it there.
Okay.
Do you want to let him respond?
Huh?
You want to let him respond?
Sure.
So I'll probably let Mahendra Patel here speak on that as well. I'm actually not sure on what houses are being, what properties are owned and what houses we're referring to here. If we're referring to the ones across the street, which I believe so, because those are the only houses there, you know, from at least my recollection of construction activity. So some of you may know Mahendra was intimately involved in all of the construction during that time. So, you know, if something like that had happened and it was brought to our attention, I'm sure we would have corrected it. But I'm right now not aware of any details about that.
I'm just going to ask about the responsible, like, I got nowhere, like, he's not here.
You're talking to what, you're not talking to them?
Like, after I found out, I went to the hotel to ask who, why they dumped it in my property. Nobody here, he's not here, I can't give you his phone number, you have to come back. And, you know, I, I left it that way.
Can you check into that and take care of it for him?
My name is Mahendra, if you need it, I can go to his property tomorrow or next week and check it out, what the issue is, because this property, I don't know when, what timeframe he's talking about. There was other construction happened after our hotel was built for that tofu house. So I don't know if he's referring to the tofu house construction, I don't know. So I'll be more than happy to work with him, go to his site, see what his problem. If he has a debris in his property, with my expense, I'll take it out. We don't want to give a hard time to anybody or any neighbors in the area. But this is the first time I am hearing.
I don't know, can like contact, give it on its own, I don't know, but...
Well, that's all we can do unless, you know, in the US, like, you have something else to stop the project.
I'll go and check it out with him, I'll get your phone number. And I will make sure I have his number, and I'll talk to him and make an appointment, and go and check it out, what the issue is, and whatever problems there, we'll correct it. I don't know whether we have done it, I don't know if we have done it, I'm sure we have not done it, but to make chapter close, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Okay. What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the same findings that were adopted in case number 4269, that approved the variance, the same variance that's being requested in this case.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the requested variance with the same conditions that were imposed in case number 4269.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Looks like we have two decisions.
We have two sets of minutes, no, two sets of
Decisions.
Decisions. 4310. Everybody get to read them?
I wrote them, so I don't, I'm good with them.
Oh, so they'll go through the first time?
We also have a request to withdraw, right? Do we have to approve?
Yeah. Motion, open case number 4310.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, accept the decision as written in case number 4310.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, the decision.
Turn your life away.
Motion, open case number 4311.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, accept the decision as written in case number 4311.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open case number 4312.
4312?
Yeah.
Second.
Where'd you get that one?
That's the one to dismiss the case without prejudice.
Oh, okay. Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to read that into the record?
Okay. Hi, Kristen, my name is Michael Kataris. I live at 38 Phillips Ave, Stoughton. I am currently scheduled for the ZBA meeting on September 5th. I would like to withdraw without prejudice. Please, if you need anything else from me, please let me know. Thank you for your time, Michael Kataris.
Motion to dismiss case number 4312 without prejudice?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's signed, huh?
Well, is she, there's nothing in the decision thing?
No.
Okay.
I'll put that in there, but I need the back pages of these.
You have to start all over again. Motion to adjourn.
I need, I need the back page, oh. Oh, here you go, it's signed.
Are you calling for the vote on that, Sherm? To adjourn? Really? You worried Emile's going to run out on you?
No, we're worried about you.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
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 Aye.